Your address is in Richcrest? Your address is in Richcrest?
My address?
No. I don't know why somebody has to... Richcrest address someone?
Probably got our names in.
Well, now.
I already had a copy. That's all right.
It's only three of us sitting here.
Yeah, they'll sit there.
At this time, we'll have the meeting for the Garden Grove City Council. Ms. Palloy, which you please call Roll.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Phan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Here.
And Mayor Broadwater.
Here. Okay, at this time, we'll have the invocation of Mr. Kingsley and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance with Chris Pham.
Please prepare yourself according to your fate. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. May it be your will, God, to reawaken in us joy and blessing during this holiday season. Grant us a peaceful holiday season of goodness and blessing, sustenance, and vitality; a holiday season of abundance and honor; a holiday season filled with and guided by your love. And, Lord, we pray for a happy and fruitful New Year in which our worthy aspirations will be fulfilled. Amen.
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 Please place the flag. Pledge of allegiance. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding we have some presentations this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Okaiki to make the presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fattal. Yes, we do. This evening, the city council is pleased to recognize a very special group of seasoned veterans who have loyally served the city of Garden Grove for twenty-five, thirty, and thirty-five years respectfully. Some of the honorees unable to be here tonight are twenty-five-year employees: Robert Bermides, Thomas Count, Ronnie Ucarveria, Robert Higginbottom, Greg McIver, Scott Frye, Les Rustenschild, Mary Ann Tyrone, Peter Vai, and John Savala; and thirty-year employees: Rick Duval, Thad Reed, and one thirty-five-year employee who could not be here, Timothy Wallenford. The council is pleased to welcome the following twenty-five and thirty-year employees, honorees, here tonight, as I ask them to please come forward: Daniel Edwards, Ted Peasley, Alonzo Reyes, Philip Seymour, and Ronald Meislin. We'll begin tonight with Daniel Edwards. It was as a police officer reserve in August nineteen eighty-eight that Daniel began his career of providing the city with dedicated loyalty and service for a quarter of a century. Daniel quickly advanced through the ranks to his current level of senior reserve officer. In nineteen ninety-one, the Garden Grove Reserve Unit was recognized, was reorganized, excuse me, into squad, and Daniel was quickly promoted to one of the department's reserve squad leaders. In May of nineteen ninety-three, the police department's gang detail was in need of additional help and requested the assistance of the reserve unit. Daniel volunteered, working two years in that assignment, earning several commendations along the way. Daniel was instrumental in developing the police department's bicycle unit and produced a grant and procured a grant that funded the department with six new, fully-equipped police bikes. Daniel continues to walk patrol as well as any detail he is called upon. After twenty-five years of service with the police department, Daniel remains enthusiastic and shows great dedication to the police department and the citizens of Garden Grove. Thank you, Daniel, for your twenty-five-year commitment to service to the city of Garden Grove. Our next honorary is Ted Peasley. Ted started his career in law enforcement as a reserve police officer in June nineteen eighty-eight after serving in the United States Marine Corps for four years. He was promoted to police officer in May nineteen eighty-nine and walked every bit patrol in the area. Ted returned to patrol as a training officer until he was transferred into the Crimes Against Persons Unit as a detective. He was quickly promoted to sergeant and again returned to patrol. In two thousand and seven, Ted was promoted to lieutenant and soon was transferred to Investigations where he currently is assigned. Ted has received several commendations throughout his career and is the recipient of both the Medal of Merit and the Life Saving Medal. Ted, the city congratulates and thanks you for your dedicated service. Our next recipient tonight is Alonzo Reyes. Alonzo has been a full-time police officer with the city since May nineteen eighty-eight. He walked uniform patrol for the first five years, during which time he spent six months on a bicycle squad. He was one of the original members of the department's undercover. In January nineteen ninety-four, he was transferred to Special Investigations Unit, where he spent the first two years with the Orange County Regional Narcotics Suppression Program, a multi-agency task force that targets Colombian cocaine dealers and money launderers. He returned to Garden Grove in nineteen ninety-six and worked in an undercover capacity. During the next four years, he conducted narcotics and vice investigations throughout the city. At one point, his hair and beard became so long, his wife refused to go out with him in public. To the relief of his wife, he cleaned up and returned to uniform patrol in two thousand. Two years later, he transferred to the Detective Bureau, where he was assigned to the Crimes Against Persons Unit. In two thousand and ten, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant and returned to uniform as patrol supervisor. He currently supervises the Career Criminal Apprehension Team, which is an undercover unit that pursues wanted subjects and addresses crime trends throughout the city. Alonzo, the city congratulates you on your twenty-five years of outstanding civil service to the city of Garden Grove. The next recipient is Philip Seymour. Phil was hired in nineteen eighty-eight as a senior recreation leader with the Community Services Department. Throughout his years of service, Phil has served as sports scorekeeper, onsite softball supervisor, field attendant, and on occasion, front desk phone receptionist. Phil's dedication to recreational sports in the city has given him a good rapport with the coaches, team managers, and players. He is highly adored by the many youths in the local organizations and very much appreciated by his supervisors. Phil is always willing to assist his fellow employees whenever needed. He demonstrates a friendly attitude and is an asset to the Recreation Division. The city congratulates you, Phil, and thanks you for your years of dedicated service to the city of Garden Grove. Our last recipient of the evening is Ronald Meislin. Ron, civil service to the city of Garden Grove began on November twenty-eighth nineteen eighty-three. Ron walked as an equipment mechanic for public works and quickly climbed the ranks to acting lead and subsequently promoted to lead person in July nineteen eighty-five. He was promoted to foreman and received numerous commendations from the fire department for his assistance with emergency equipment repairs. In nineteen ninety, Ron was promoted to Equipment Maintenance Supervisor, and in nineteen ninety-five, he became the Equipment Maintenance Superintendent. In November two thousand and six, his performance allowed him to advance to his current position as Facilities Division Manager, overseeing building maintenance, equipment maintenance, and parks. Ron is known for his fairness, leadership, wealth of knowledge, and especially for his ability to make everyone laugh. Ron, the city council congratulates you on your thirty years of duty for service and leadership to the city. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these distinguished individuals with memento in recognition and appreciation of their many wonderful years of dedicated service to the city of Garden Grove. The city is proud of each of their milestone accomplishments and looks forward to many more years of success in their city career. Thank you, guys.
We'd like to get our picture taken with all you guys. Will you just move around here a little bit more? Move Ronald over a little bit.
If you two switched, then Dina won't be hidden. There you go. Thank you. Going one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and...
If any of you'd like to say a few words, just step right up to the podium and let us know what you think.
They haven't retired yet.
Don't go too far. Okay, thank you very much. I understand we have a second presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a very special presentation, and Mr. Okaiki will make this one as well.
Yes, sir, thank you. Very special presentation indeed. Next, the city council is pleased to honor another accomplished veteran who will begin the new year as a recent retiree from the city of Garden Grove. Will John Jenkins please come forward?
Well, in nineteen sixty-two...
He has a box up there, but the box he's gonna give me is ticking. Listen, my name...
They're going to make a presentation to you.
This what? Okay, all right, okay.
All right, thank you. In nineteen sixty-two, six years after the city was incorporated, the Recreation Division was formed. John, having worked for recreation at the Garden Grove Unified School District, made a lateral change and became one of the first recreation leaders in the Community Services Department, earning a whopping two dollars an hour. By the nature of his lengthy tenure with the city, John has the unique distinction of having worked for the Community Services Department longer than most current department staff has been, have been alive. Throughout John's fifty-one years with the city, he has filled every road imaginable, from scorekeeper to delivery man to front counter receptionist. For the past fifteen years, he has primarily served as the onsite field supervisor for the adult softball program. In that time, he has become the face of softball in Garden Grove. He is often recognized by the adult softball players or the parents of youth sports participants as Mr. Jenkins, their PE teacher back at Jordan Middle School. Always willing to lend a hand, John has helped on several occasions during football season, keeping score, maintaining the basketball courts, or even manning the front desk. Like a military officer proudly wears the stripes on his uniform, John displays his years of service when he walks into City Hall, wearing an old-staff shirt, which he has had for many years. It's a little tattered and worn, but city logo is still there, showing his dedication and years of service. He has left a lasting impression not only on the sports program participants, but also with his coworkers and supervisors. His exceptional and devoted service to the Community Services Department will be dearly missed. John and his wife have three children, who have also walked in the Recreation Division: ten grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. John and his wife plan to spend their recently-retired lives at home, catching up on some much-deserved rest and relaxation. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present John with a beautiful crystal memento in recognition and appreciation of his fifty-one years of dedicated service to the city of Garden Grove. His admirable dedication to his profession and extraordinary city career is a great example of the personal commitment he has contributed to the city of Garden Grove. Congratulations, John.
You're the prettiest one up there. It is ticking. John, say a few words for us, please.
Yes, you can.
Okay, first of all, my wife, would you stand up here, please? This lovely lady, my mother, I was the youngest of seven children. My mother had a very bad kidney infection. She died at age forty-three. I was ten years old. We used to sit and talk about church and about the guy upstairs, the whole bit. And she told me, she says, "When you meet the right girl, you'll know it." Well, this, this is the right girl. And we went to school together at Grace Idaho. She went to BYU and I went to Utah State. She got loans for me, so she moved up to Utah State. I was an athlete. I played sports. We weren't too imbued with money at those times. With seven children, mother and a father, my older brother wanted to be a doctor, so he went to University of Idaho and served beer, five-cent bugs of beer, so he could pay his way through college. But anyway, World War II came around, and he went to the first class of Nassau, the very first class. When the war got going, they said, "We can't maintain Nassau anymore," so they put him into space medicine. He wanted to be a doctor. I wanted to be a doctor, but I liked to play sports. Got a scholarship for Idaho State. I was gonna be a doctor. I went up there. I had great grades in high school, As and Bs. All the way through, I got a scholarship to Idaho State to play basketball. I got up there. I was going to major in medicine, but my problem was, I played basketball from four to about seven every day. I had labs three or four days a week, from two to five. And it just so happened the Korean War came along, and the draft board in this little town says, "What we're gonna do is, we're gonna take the people with the best grades in college, and we're gonna give them the deferment and let them stay out till they finish school." Well, my grades went from As and Bs in high school to Cs and Ds and, once in a while, borderline even lower. So I didn't want to get drafted in the Army, so I transferred to Utah State. Got an Air Force ROTC, went for five years ROTC, got my commission. She convinced me to marry her. We've been married sixty years last September. We've been together for sixty-seven years. When we graduated from college, the professor got up and he said, "There's one thing I would like to make clear. She has a PhD putting husband through college." And she's been putting me through college at Whittier. I got my masters. I have seven years of college now with UCLA Extension and Cal State Fullerton. I got out of the service the end of September. So my wife and I went down to Mason, to Riverside to visit my brother. We're looking for a job, end of September. We went to LA, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll take you." Went to Long Beach, "We'll take you, we'll take both of you." We were going back to Riverside. We stopped up on Lincoln at a service station, and I called OA Peters, the superintendent of the Garden Grove Unified School District. He says, "Oh, we've got a, a class for you. We're on double session. There's forty-nine kids in the class, and we have to put you in the multipurpose room." So anyway, this was on a Wednesday. He says, "You come in Thursday, and I want to interview you." What happened? He had a boxer that boxed at Idaho State, for they used to have boxing in college, and this guy was a mean broad. Oh, he was tough. And he was teaching these sixth-grade kids, and he quit. He went in, he said, "I've had it, and I can't stand it, and I can't stand these kids." OA Peters didn't tell me that. I said, "OA Peters, I'm a PE man. I've played sports. I'd like to stay in sports." "Well, when the next PE job comes along, it's yours." Well, I was with the sixth graders, forty-nine of them, in the multipurpose room on folding chairs. They finally got us a classroom, and I got thirty-six kids. I fell in love with them, they fell in love with me. OA Peters called me, and he said, "Hey, I got a PE opening in a junior high." And everybody said, "Oh, junior high, don't take them, they're so weird. You don't want to get near junior high kids, they'll drive you nuts." I went up to Lamson, it's now Ralston, and I taught junior high for thirty-five years. I loved those kids. I was as weird as they were. We got along perfect. I had kids that went on, made All-American baseball players. We had one kid that went to the Olympics in Mexico City and Munich and got silver medals. They named a pool after him out here in East Gate. I had a young lady. We square danced every Friday. This little girl would run out of the multipurpose room, we were square dancing, and she said, "The boys have been teasing me since I was in kindergarten. They won't touch me, they won't, they don't want anything to do with me." She ran outside, I ran out to console her, and she said, "I'm gonna kill myself." I says, "You're not gonna kill yourself." So I went in, and I talked to the woman PE teacher that was teaching the square dance, and I said, "I have found my partner for the rest of the year, the eighth grade year." So anyway, I square danced with this girl, and I had a little talk with the boys in my PE classes. "You respect women, period. You don't pull their bra strap, you don't touch them anywhere on the body. You do, you're gonna have me to deal with." The Powers models came over to Lamson for demonstration, how to fix your hair, how to put makeup on. So I went to the home make teacher, and I says, "Would you take Mary Ellen Cooper, Glenn Ellen Cooper, and have these models work with her and help her?" She did. She was a good singer, she was a great singer. She got into high school, she was a tremendous singer. Well, the same bratty boys that picked on her from kindergarten up went over to the Greenbrier. For you old people, the Greenbrier used to be a very nice restaurant over here. They put her name in to be Miss Teenage Garden Grove. They were making fun of her, joking at her. So anyway, she came in, she says, "What should I do?" She didn't have a dad. I says, "You and your mom can make yourself a formal. You have beautiful natural ability. The Powers model showed you how to comb your hair and look like a beautiful young lady." So anyway, she went to Garden Grove High, these kids put her name in to be Miss Teenage US, Miss Teenage Garden Grove. They had the competition in the Greenbrier. She won Miss Teenage Garden Grove. Okay, now, in the meantime, I had a kidney stone. I was in the hospital for a week with the most excruciating pain in my life. My poor wife was sitting on the couch, we were watching it on TV. She went to Monterey to the Miss California contest. They picked number two. Number one, she was Miss California, Teenage USA. Okay, now, that doesn't end there. I'm on the couch in pain. I'm in pain, the kidney stone's moving, it's killing me. She went to Mobile, Alabama, for the Miss Teenage USA contest. I was in the hospital for seven or eight days. Old Dr. Ralston was trying to get this stone out of me, and they didn't know how to do it. Exercised, drank cranberry juice, run up and downstairs. Well, when the move, when the stone moved, man, I didn't do anything but lay down and cry. We were watching the Miss Teenage USA contest on the couch. We were watching, she was one of the five. She was one of the three. She was one of the two. And we now crowned Miss Glenn Ellen Cooper, Miss Teenage USA. I jumped eleven feet off the couch. I was in such pain, next morning I passed my stone. So anyway, I have loved working with the city of Garden Grove. I've had some great people. I've had, been asked to do everything. We used to have an Orange County Rhino professional, semi-pro football team, and they used to rent the field down here at Garden Grove Park. Well, Dan Walker was my boss. He said, "They owe us eighteen hundred dollars, 'cause they haven't paid." So he says, "You get down there, and they're gonna give you a check for five hundred dollars." So I went down. "Oh, he isn't here yet, but we're practicing." I says, "I need a five hundred dollar check." "Oh, he'll be here later." So I called Dan Walker, and I says, "What do I do?" He says, "Turn off the lights." So I went over, and I kept the car running. I opened up the light box. I flipped off the switches. I jumped my car and ran up to the police station and parked in front of the police station. And sure enough, five or six three-hundred-and-fifty-pound semi-pro football players got in their cars, and they chased me to the police department. But you know what came out of that? The good coach of the Rhinos went in and gave him a five hundred dollar check the next day. He paid him the thirteen hundred. They weren't gonna get the fields anymore until they paid the entire eighteen hundred. And you know, to this day, it is so beautiful to know, if you want to rent a field or do business with Garden Grove, you come up to secretary, pay the bill in advance, and then you can have an invoice to say you've rented the field. But anyway, this poor girl has sat home for I don't know how many thousand hours. Being a schoolteacher made me a great recreation leader. Being a great recreation leader made me a good referee. I refereed high school and college and semi-pro for thirty-seven years. In fact, what was funny, some of the guys that chased me, I ref'd their games many times, and they'd come up and high-five me. And they'd say, "Good for you. Don't let them pull this stuff on you, and don't let them pull this stuff on the city." It has been a beautiful experience. One more thing I'm gonna say. We've done Easter egg hunts, we've done track meets, we've done basketball, we have done hundreds of activities. And I want to tell you, councilmen, the thing that just opened my... And I want to tell you, councilmen, the thing that just opened my heart and made me feel good is a kid that just won a cross-country meet. And his mommy and daddy are standing there, they've got their arm around him, and there's a city councilman, or there's a mayor down there to have their pictures taken with this kid. You know, I came up today, I'm just like that kid that won the cross-country. I come up, and you gave me an award, and I am so proud of it. And I want to say to you, councilmen and you mayors, whenever there's an activity involving kids or adults, and there's awards to hand out, you should be there shaking their hand and getting your picture taken with them. These little kids got their picture taken with the mayor, a city councilman, and they've got it in their scrapbook for the rest of their lives. And you are the leaders. You hire good people. You've run a beautiful city. I'm so proud. We've lived here for sixty-two years, and we love the city. It's the best I've ever seen. We've had track meets, all Orange County track meets, Southern County track meets. We've gone to the Coliseum for pass-punt contests. I took a bunch of kids up to the Laker game one night, and I made them wear a shirt and tie. And I knew Mr. Thompson, he lived over in Long Beach. He was in charge of activities for the Lakers. So anyway, he said, "How would you like to bring some kids up and play three six-minute quarters before the Lakers play? And then when the Lakers go into halftime, you take those little kids out." I want little kids. I don't want your big, people pay to kind of see the big guys, but I want you to bring some little kids. So I took the kids down, they played. A huge crowd. Boston was playing the Lakers for the championship. Ovation, city of Garden Grove, little kids. They recognized. I was called up thirteen times to take my B-team up to play at the Sports Arena or the Forum, because Garden Grove made such an impression with those kids, shirts and ties, and they behaved themselves. They gave them pizza, they gave them hot dogs, they gave them a drink, popcorn. And I am so proud of this city, and I'm so proud of you city councilmen and you mayors. We used to have a man, Mr. Dinson was his name. He was on the city council, if you can remember him. Old taxpayer, tax saver, Dinson. Boy, he would go nose to nose with the board members. But do you know what? We had an Easter egg hunt, and here's the mayor, and here's old Dinson, standing there shaking hands with the kids and congratulating them, because they found the egg that had a big prize in it. So in other words, if you could possibly do it, that's what opened my heart, and this one opened my heart. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. God bless all of you, and I hope you have a good holiday, and I say amen.
So like that, we need to postpone.
I'm just kidding. Just our last presentation is from the city of Santa Ana to update the council on the fixed guideway project that involves both city of Santa Ana and Garden Grove. And so at this time, the representative from Santa Ana would come forward.
Matt, I was going to do a lead-in for him. No, they are here. They're coming. I'm going to begin.
Okay, Carl.
You're good people, and I'll vote for you five times next time.
Mr. Hill will introduce the item before Santa Ana comes forward.
Sure, that's a tough act to follow, but mayor and members of the city council, tonight we would like to present to you an update on the Go Local program that was initiated in 2006 in order to help reduce roadway congestion and facilitate ease of mass transit mobility from downtown Santa Ana, originating at the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center to the proposed terminating point of Westminster and Harbor Boulevard in the city of Garden Grove. Tonight, we have the following members representing the project. Jason Gabriel from the city of Santa Ana, project manager. House Suasitgu from Evans Brooks and Associates. Juliette Arroyo, Evans Brooks and Associate, and Kathy Higley from the Cordoba Corporation. Through a PowerPoint presentation, the representatives would like to update the council on where the project is at, what is anticipated for the future, seek the continued support from Garden Grove to move this project forward, and will conclude by opening it up to the city council to answer questions concerning the Go Local project. In addition, I would like to add, we, as the city of Garden Grove, have been supportive of this project and have been participating in meetings, plan reviews, and discussions regarding the project since its inception. We hope that through this update that the city council will continue the city's support for the proposal, and if it is the council's desire to continue its support, we would like to prepare a city council resolution stating such, and forward the resolution to the proponents of this project. With that, I would like to turn the microphone now over to Kathy Higley for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kathy Higley with Cordoba Corporation, and I'm the consultant team project manager for this project. Tonight's timing is kind of ideal to bring you up to speed, because we've made quite a lot of progress since the last time we were here, and we have some kind of key decision points and milestones we hope rapidly approaching. Just to provide you with a little bit of background, as Mr. Hill mentioned, this project is part of the OCTA Go Local program. It's considered the step-two portion of the program that started in 2006. This is a partnership between OCTA and the local agencies, local cities in the county, to foster local transit connectivity, in particular, enhance connectivity with MetroLink and extend the reach of MetroLink in the region. It was intended initially to be a competitive process, meaning that we will consider all projects, fully evaluate them, and select the best ones for implementation. The city of Garden Grove and Santa Ana teamed up early on in the step-one process to consider the concept of a transit system, a high-capacity transit system that would move people from the Santa Ana train station to Garden Grove at Harbor and Westminster. Following step-one, the process, the project was considered worthy of moving into step-two, where it would be subject to an alternatives analysis and environmental review, and that's what we've been working on since 2009, fall of 2009. This has been funded by OCTA. In 2010, no, fall of 2010, OCTA allocated the funds to move this project forward into preliminary engineering pending completion of this current work effort. And then we also embarked on what we call pre-preliminary engineering in fall, summer of 2011, and that was to begin preparing the project for implementation and also to pursue federal funding for the project. We defined a study area early on that covered basically the area from Grand Avenue on the east to Harbor Boulevard on the west, from Seventeenth Street on the north and Westminster Avenue, down to First Street. This encompassed kind of the activity centers through the downtown Santa Ana, the Civic Center. It encapsulates the high school, the performing arts, Santa Ana City College, the Willow wick Golf Course, and then the commercial activity out at Harbor and Westminster. Overall, the corridor is 4.1 miles long. Early in the process, we developed a purpose and need for the project. It's been an evolving statement and currently sits with FTA for final concurrence, but as it stands now, the purpose for the project is to improve transit connectivity within the study area and also between the study area and the surrounding region. To relieve congestion by providing people an opportunity to traveling through the orange crush. To be sensitive to the character of our neighborhoods and communities. To increase transportation options for residents, employees, and businesses in the study area. To improve transit accessibility, again, within the study area and also within the surrounding region. To provide benefits to the environment by improving air quality to support and foster vital economic vitality and foster redevelopment. And finally, to be financially feasible and cost-effective to construct and operate ultimately. The project, the study area itself has qualities that make it really unique. We have a very high density for Orange County with nearly eighteen thousand people per square mile within the study area itself. It has a high level of employment density because it encompasses the downtown Santa Ana and the Civic Center. We have almost eighteen percent of households that don't own cars. And the other thing that's particularly unique is that we have almost fourteen percent of residents who indicate that public transportation is their primary mode to get to work. So all of these suggest that transit options will be well-appreciated and used within the study area. As far as the process we've undertaken, we considered a full range of transit technologies from commuter rail, light rail, streetcar, all sorts of buses, trolleys. We screened those down to the ones that were most appropriate. The characteristics of the study area helped determine that, and primarily that we're circulating through a very established and constrained urban area, and that we're trying to move people with fairly frequent stops. So we quickly narrowed it down to a light rail, a streetcar, or a bus type of an option. Secondly, we looked at a host of alignments, met with the communities, got some feedback, and selected those which seemed most appropriate. Further, more detailed analysis during the 2012 year took us down to the alternatives that we're now considering, and there's four of them. A no-build alternative, what we're calling a transportation system management alternative, which is basically the best we could do with buses to improve our mobility, and two streetcar alternatives. If you look, go back. Nope, back, back. There we go. The TSM alternative involves three components. It would enhance current bus service on First Street, including a loop that would go up and connect to the train station. It doesn't currently today. A second component would extend what are existing station-linked services between the train station, downtown, and the Civic Center to operate all day with fifteen-minute headways. And the third would be a new bus route that would travel through the Civic Center and then up Bristol Street and across Seventeenth Street, Westminster, somewhat imitating what the streetcar alignment would do. So that's the TSM. And then we have the two build alternatives for the streetcar. The first one, Streetcar One, would go from the Santa Ana train station, westbound along Santa Ana Boulevard. When it reaches rate, it would enter the Old Pacific Electric right-of-way and continue in the right-of-way out to the intersection of Harbor and Westminster. It would stop on the north side of Westminster, just east of Harbor, where the car wash is currently. It would return along the PE right-of-way and Santa Ana Boulevard, and where Santa Ana Boulevard kind of bifurcates and becomes a couplet, it would travel along Fourth Street. Fourth Street is the heavily commercial, kind of historic commercial district in Santa Ana. Travel through there one direction and then return to Santa Ana Boulevard on the east side of the downtown and back to the train station. The second alternative would use Santa Ana Boulevard to Civic Center, come across Civic Center to Flower. The idea was to better serve the Civic Center, the library, the courthouse, and the Santa Ana College Stadium. On the return trip, rather than Fourth Street, Alternative Two would use Fifth Street. Okay, probably, both of these alternatives, we have a number of design options that we're considering. For instance, on Fourth Street, we have several options for dealing with the existing diagonal parking, which wouldn't be able to remain. It would conflict with streetcar operations. Along Civic Center Drive, we have two alternatives for dealing with the planned bike lane along Civic Center. One would require some additional right-of-way to accommodate the streetcar, and other would actually utilize an existing travel lane. But the one you're probably most interested in are the alternatives that we've considered for the intersection of Harbor and Westminster, and in particular, how we cross Westminster Avenue. We looked at three alternatives to get across Westminster. One was to come across At Grade and basically create a new intersection. It would travel across Westminster up into an industrial area, require some additional right-of-way takes, and re-enter the PE right-of-way. The second alternative was to bridge Westminster Avenue and come back down in the PE right-of-way again. And the third was what we called At Grade truncated. It was the idea that perhaps we didn't want the additional right-of-way takes, and we create, we come across At Grade and just stop curbside like we did with all of the other stations.
You know, the first time we looked at this, you were two or three hundred feet into Garden Grove. It looks to me like you're about ten feet into it now.
We are, basically, we take up the corner from north of Westminster to just the edge of Harbor within the PE right-of-way. So there would be no additional right-of-way takes in the area. There would be a station area there.
Worried about takes for?
What are we worried about takes for?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it seems like you're scared to go into Garden Grove. I mean, really, you're just, really, just touching it, breathing on it. Nothing there. I mean, I don't know why you'd come to us. I mean, this is all Santa Ana. Ninety, it's not ninety-nine percent Santa Ana, it's ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of Santa Ana.
It is. I think the idea was that by crossing Westminster and ending up on that northwest quadrant of the intersection, it provides future opportunity for Garden Grove for extensions up the PE right-of-way, up Harbor Boulevard.
Why don't you make it across and then provide, at least you got across the street. I don't see where, I don't even see what we have to do with this. I mean, you're talking about one little teeny piece of property there.
Yeah, it's, basically, the western terminus is in Garden Grove. The places where streetcar has been implemented, it's been found to stimulate, considerably stimulate economic development within the area two to three blocks of the streetcar. It's considered to be quite a catalyst. There have been studies done in Portland and Seattle and Tampa where streetcars have been operating for a while. We have a forecast underway as part of our study, which will be completed once we have adopted a locally preferred alternative, and we can be a little bit more specific about the alignment to look at what the actual economic developments, benefits of the streetcar will be. As far as potential future connectivity, this is looked at as kind of a first step. As you may know, Anaheim also is pursuing a streetcar alternative, or a streetcar project to the north that would also end in the vicinity of Harbor Boulevard. There would be opportunities for future connectivity moving forward. It would kind of redefine how Orange County is looking at our high-capacity transit and our linkages to MetroLink. We've done some, based on about a ten percent level of engineering, so this is all very preliminary and conceptual, but we have developed some cost estimates. The capital cost estimates for the streetcar are in the vicinity of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, depending on which alternative. This is a little bit less than fifty million dollars a mile, which is pretty much in keeping with national standards for streetcar projects. The costs have also been presented in an annualized format because the TSM alternative, while the initial capital outlay seems much less expensive than either the streetcar options, the lifecycle costs of the TSM alternative are quite a bit higher than the streetcar, and it kind of brings them into parity over time, as you need to replace buses much more frequently than you would need to replace streetcar vehicles. much more frequently than you would need to replace streetcar vehicles. As far as potential funding for the capital projects, local measure M2 money, federal new starts, CMAC funds, there's the opportunity perhaps for city or private developer funding, contributions to the funding, and then user and advertising fees. As far as the O&amp;M costs, there will be some Fairbox recovery, and then there may be opportunities for Measure M2 or city contributions, or again, user and advertising fees. Since the very, very beginning of the project, we've had a pretty robust outreach process. We started with listening sessions in February of 2010 to meet with the community, to kind of solicit their input, get a sense of their ideas and what, what they're thinking. We've tried to cover the full range of study areas so that we would also capture people on the west end. Some of them were Garden Grove and some of them are West Santa Ana residents. We had scoping meetings for the environmental process in June of 2010, and since then, we've really been trying to go out and make sure that we're hearing issues early while we can still incorporate them into the planning and design process. We've been meeting with neighborhood associations, business owners, business tenants, pretty much anybody that wants to have us come talk to them. We have a standing stakeholder working group that has met, we've met with as we approach any key milestones. We've been conducting fixed guideway tours. We drive, we've recently driven members of Santa Ana City Council and would obviously be happy to take any of you that were interested in going out and driving the course.
And drive us what, 10 feet into our own city? I think this is a joke. I'm really, I mean, why would you even bring it for us? I, I just don't see what, we're involved in it at all. I mean, I don't know why you have our logo on up there either. I mean, you're talking about 10 feet into the city of Garden Grove. It wasn't designed that way. It was pitiful as it was to start with, we approved it, and at least it crossed Garden Grove, uh, it crossed Harbor Boulevard and went on up the, the route a little bit. You're talking about citizens of Garden Grove? There isn't any citizens that live within a half a mile of that. It's all commerce. Good luck to you.
Okay. Right now, the process, the project, the current phase is scheduled to be completed in spring of next year, about March. We'd move into preliminary engineering kind of early summer. It'd be about an 18-month process with construction beginning in spring of 2016. The project could be completed and operating by the end of 2018. We have an environmental document, an EIR to satisfy CEQA conditions. Santa Ana is the lead agency on that. We have an environmental assessment. The FTA, Federal Transit Administration, is the lead agency on that. It's a combined document. It's currently at the FTA for their final technical buy-off. They'll do a legal sufficiency, and the document will be released for public review. We're hopeful that'll happen in January. They've had it for quite a while now. We'll do a 45-day public review, and by the end of February, begin addressing public comments. And at that point, we will be prepared to identify a locally preferred alternative. Although we will use all of the information that's been developed as part of the alternatives analysis, analysis and the environmental process to select the locally preferred alternative, it'll primarily be based on the number of people served, the economic development potential of the alignment, the community impacts, the estimated daily boardings, and the capital and operating costs of the alternatives. When we have a recommendation and jointly with staff, come up with a preferred, locally preferred alternative, we'll bring it before the councils of Santa Ana and Garden Grove to be adopted. Santa Ana will certify the environmental document. At that point, we've completed the Step Two work program. We'll go before the OCTA Board, and they will acknowledge completion by Santa Ana and Garden Grove of the Step Two requirements, and we'll have a project ready to move forward into the design phase. FTA will, at that point, be prepared, we hope, to issue a finding of no significant impact.
Well, sure, no significant impact on us.
Well, we've been working very closely with, with your staff throughout the process.
I don't know what about, 10 feet? You don't even have a parking lot put up there to, a person that can park their car and go down, at least down to the central part of Santa Ana and go to work.
There will be about 49 parking spaces at the terminal station.
In what city?
In Garden Grove, within the, within the station area.
You're gonna take all that down and around there and put in a parking lot?
What we're taking is where the, there's currently a car wash whose lease expires in 2015 located in the PE Rideaway. The streetcar will take basically that 100 feet from Westminster, 100 feet wide from Westminster to Harbor. There'll be a platform area, and there will be about 49 parking spaces for a park-and-ride lot for the streetcar. It opens up the opportunity for more to happen in both the business park immediately behind that, as well as the gas station in front. It would be anticipated that when the streetcar is operating and linking these areas to downtown, that much of the area would likely change, that it would stimulate development in the area.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Organizations and also the, my partner, hand-to-hand in my proposal to organize a test festival. And I couldn't believe that you can use the wrong information to make the decision. And I feel very disappointed with the guidance of Mayor Protem, Dana Nguyen, and guide you to use a state website to read that name of the organization. That's not on my proposal and to disqualify my organization. And I feel very bad about that. This is very wrong, okay? I'm sorry, okay, about the guidance and decision of Mayor Protem Dana Nguyen in this wrong action. And I hope that, okay, she going to look back at the ways she worked because she is not new in the Vietnamese-American communities activity. She knew me for more than anybody else. She knew my organization. How can, she can use a wrong name of the organizations and then guide you to make the wrong decision, okay? And you will see that all the informations on my, okay, letters. And I hope that, okay, you're going to look back and, and think about, okay, your decision on November 26th. Second, I would like to let you know that, okay, it's the Vietnamese communities of San Josefohia led by the interim President Lee Khaklis, okay, lose, lost the, okay, the 513 exemption, okay, since May 2010. That means this organization did not fight tax returns for a long time, okay, at least three consecutive years before 2010, until now. They did not fight tax returns at the federal level. Also, on the state level, financial tech boss, she did not, they did not fight tax return, especially for the two years, 2000 and 2001, because they actually did not fire. I called the, you know, financial tech boss to check, and they told me they didn't fight tax return, okay, for the state level. Even in 2012, they did not fight tax return yet, okay? So this organization failed to fight tax returns, violating of the tax law several times at the state level, as well as at the federal level. Now, I don't know why, when our representatives met with you and Mayor Protem to mention the question that you guys ignore this and still allow them, okay? We have a lot of, okay, wrongdoing in tax law in, and allow them to organize a tax festival. And the third point is about the distribution of the proceed.
Okay, I need you to roll it up. You're way beyond your time.
Okay, well, I try just a 30-second lap, okay? So the third point is, they, they have to pay the federal tax because they don't have the 513 anymore. How can they have the money for the community? And they have to pay $104,000, $105,000. Okay, then they have to split $20,000, the max, okay, from the proceed. And they, they use 50% for themselves, only 25% for the nonprofit organization. And in that number, okay, for a number of nonprofit organizations in Garden Grove. I don't see they can, you know, I see, you know, contribute to the community.
Okay, you've got, you've got your say.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Charles Mitchell.
I'll try not to speak too loud, Mr. Broadwater.
I will run you out if you do.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. War is a terrible thing, and the innocent are the ones who pay the highest cost. Councilman Phan and Mayor Protem Dana Nguyen, you, among many other people, know this only too well. During our American Civil War, two generals, one on each side, made comments about war. William Tecumseh Sherman, a Union general, said, "War is hell." And he went about proving it when he claimed he would make Georgia howl when he marched through that state. During one of the bloodiest battles in the Civil War, Fredericksburg, where the Union forces were decimated when they tried to attack Confederate Works, Lee was recorded as remarking, "It is good that war is so terrible, lest we should grow too fond of it." Well, many times in history, the innocent have suffered because of the acts of various governments in declaring war and waging war. World War II, the Japanese Rape of Man-King, one of the atrocities of innocents being slaughtered. Holocaust perpetrated by the Nazis in World War II. Although there are those in some parts of the world who deny the Holocaust ever happened, this is something that we need to make sure that we remember and not let it happen again. A good friend of mine, Ed Royce Senior, Bruce Broadwater probably knows him pretty well. He was a council member in the city of Stanton for many years, and for a time was the mayor of Stanton. During World War II, Ed Royce Senior, who likes to be called the real Ed Royce of Orange County, was a forward artillery observer, and he was among the first to enter Doc Cal concentration camp after it was liberated by the 4th Infantry Division. He has pictures showing the terrible things that happened there. Now, Ed unfortunately is in a care facility right now, having fallen a couple of times and suffered injuries to his back. And I would ask that Mayor Broadwater and the council might send a card to him. I've given the information to the secretary so that you can forward your best wishes to him. I wish to, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, or whatever the appropriate phrasing is for your own beliefs, and to everyone a happy and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I see have no more cards, so I, we will close the oral communications and we'll recess the Garden Grove City Council and go to the Industrial Development Authority.
Please call roll, Terry.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones. Uh, Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Fan?
Here. Want to go to the consent items? May I have a motion to approve consent items 2A and 2B?
I move to approve.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Motion received, four yes votes.
And seeing we have no items for consideration, no other matters, we adjourn.
At this time, we will call the Garden Grove Successor Agency.
Okay. Member Broadwater? Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones appears to be absent.
Mr. Beard? Serving as the chairman, there's the vice chair. What is the first item is oral communication. We've had that study session. Do we have to acknowledge we had a study session earlier?
No.
Okay. Item number three, oral communication. Four, consent items, approval of amendments. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Public hearing, none. Items for consideration.
Mr. Vice Chair and members of the successor agency, the item before you is a consideration of revising the Long Range Property Management Plan. This was submitted to the DOF, and they returned with some comments, and Mr. Delalong is going to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the successor agency. The item before you tonight is the approval of the successor agency's revised Long Range Property Management Plan. On May 29th, 2013, the successor agency submitted its Oversight Board-approved Long Range Property Management Plan to the Department of Finance for approval. After providing significant amounts of additional information and a delay due to the ROPS 1314B review and approval cycle, staff received a letter from the Department of Finance in November 22nd, 2013 outlining items on the plan that were not approved. Staff has revised the plan to address most of the issues with it. Some involve moving properties into different categories or changing some of the language associated with some of the properties. There is, however, a disagreement between the successor agency staff and the Department of Finance regarding the properties to be retained for future development. This impacts the former Fandango Restaurant parcel adjacent to the Hyatt Regency Hotel and the properties that make up the Site C Hotel project. Although there is no disagreement regarding the category in which these properties were placed, the Department of Finance is saying that the successor agency is required to eventually enter into reimbursement agreements with the various taxing entities in order to transfer these properties to the city. Successor agency staff contends that since the successor agency has been granted a finding of completion, the dissolution law requiring reimbursement agreements no longer applies, and these properties may transfer to the city without reimbursement agreements. Staff has cited the pertinent code sections in the plan and has provided the Department of Finance staff with additional information supporting this position. Even so, the plan may get rejected a second time due to the Department of Finance's interpretation of AB 1484, and we may be back with a second revision in 2014. At this time, staff is recommending that this successor agency adopt the attached resolution approving the revised Long Range Property Management Plan and authorize the director to transmit the revised plan to the Oversight Board. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff?
Just briefly, so if we go back and forth on this issue and neither side agreed, is there a end resolution to this at some point, or how do you foresee it happening?
Unfortunately, under the property management plan review, there is no, they have a meet-and-confer process for other items. They do not have that provision. So as we discussed in the study session, if they come back and still reject our argument, we'll probably gather again and see if litigation is, is an option, or do we just comply with what they've, have determined? Even though it's a little bit more cumbersome, it still gets us there eventually, and so that would be the discussion. But there is no other process to continue to, to argue our, our position with them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Otherwise, motion?
I'm with the issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Not, then we are adjourned.
Okay, we'll reconvene the city council. We've done consent items. Let's go to- Let's go to public hearings. We have none. Commission and committee matters. Appointments to the city commission vacancies.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we have not done consent calendar for the city council. So, that'd be your next item is to approve.
We just did it on here. We'll go to the consent items. We have warrants and...
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now we'll go to public hearings, which is not there, and we'll go to commission committee matters. Appointments to the city commission vacancies. I'd like to hold off on that for another, for, until next year.
Okay.
Items for consideration?
Mr. Mayor, your item here is to consider purchasing a water pump engine, and Mr. Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight council is being asked to authorize a contract with Waukesha Pierce Industries for the purchase of a new pump engine for well 29. The well is located on Haster Street to south of Chapman, Neil Green's glass property. The existing engine was inspected by our staff, and the main bearings were worn. At the very least, the engine would need a rebuild. After weighing the alternatives and the cost of rebuilding the engine, staff determined that a new Waukesha engine would be the most cost-effective way to go. The sole source contract would be for $320,000, and would be paid for using water funds. This concludes staff report.
Any questions for staff? Okay. No, a big water pump like that, no questions.
Well, it's cheaper to buy a new one than to replace it, tear it down, and make it all new again, correct?
The issue with the rebuild was very questionable warranties, and they really wouldn't quote us a price until we delivered the motor to them, and then they tore it apart and inspected it. So, with those inconsistencies and uncertainties, we thought it better simply to purchase a new motor.
What are our warranties on it?
This particular motor, I believe that we're one year for everything and three years for parts.
The cost that you quote there, is that both for, just for the pump itself, Bill, or is that for both installation as well?
That's just for the motor itself. We, our staff will install it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Chris, you want to start, please?
I sure would like to. It's, seems to be the last city council meeting of the year, and with that, I think, just a little reflection, I think we've had a pretty good year. I've enjoyed working with the city council members, city staff. I think we've, from our previous study session, our public study session we had, it looks like we have a very promising future in 2014. A lot of hard work done by our professionals, all the way from finance, engineering, public works, public safety, to get us on course for an economic, brighter economic future with all the plans coming to fruition. And so, I just want to commend all the staff for their hard work, commend the council for their leadership and direction to the staff, and I think it's going to be a pretty, pretty, pretty good future economically for the city and in other respects as well. We have a pretty good city with services. We do a lot with, with the limited means, and so I'm just proud to be a part of the city, on the city council and all that we do. So, it's, I think it's reflective of all the citizens and their hard work through their volunteer efforts, social organizations, businesses. We have a pretty good city, and it's reflective of where we, the hard work we did this year and how it's going to just get better in the future. And with the holidays coming, I definitely want to wish everyone on the council and the community a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, great holiday season to everybody. And with the coming new year, I want to wish happiness and health and prosperity to all, and God bless, and have a great holiday season. I look forward to working with you next year and the city staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
Yes. I'm very thankful that our city have had a very blessed year, especially with our redevelopment projects, and staff has done a wonderful job. I want to thank each and every one that has worked on it, and also all of the employees who put off their race until this year. We are very thankful to them for that, and our city is moving forward past all this economic crisis, and I'm very thankful for that, and I feel we are very blessed. I hope everyone, each and every resident in Garden Grove will have a blessed holiday and receive whatever they need to pass through the holidays and for a prosperous new year. I hope our city next year will be more prosperous as well. And with the holiday coming up, don't forget to buy in Garden Grove. There are many places open for the holiday for shopping as well as eating, so if you're going to spend, remember to spend in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Chris?
So, I just say thank you so much, everyone, for a wonderful year. Being the newest council member here, it's been a learning lesson for me, but a very blessed lesson. I can't say enough about how thankful I am to be on this wonderful council. I see every time that we have an issue, we always get through it. Sometimes we don't agree on the issues and the outcome, but we always do it in a very professional way, and I'm so honored to be with you all. Just wanted a reminder to the city and our wonderful folks in the city for the new year. Please have a good, great celebration, but be safe. Don't drink and drive. On my other job, I am a DA for Orange County. I prosecute DUIs all the time, and it's such a shame that a lot of people have these drinks and they don't think about it. They get in the car and they drive, and all of a sudden, they're pulled over, and a lot of bad things happen. So, remember when you are out there having fun, please don't drink and drive. And so, on behalf of Cindy and me and our young family, best wishes to everybody and happy holidays. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. I think it's been a very hard work and roll-up-your-sleeves-and-grind-it-out type of a recovery year for a lot of people out there. So, as the year comes to an end, I hope everyone just has time to kind of unwind a little bit and, and spend some quality time with their loved ones out there. So, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you very much. We had a gentleman that passed away this, this week, passed away Friday, November 29, Gary Maithen. Am I pronouncing that right?
Yep.
Gary Maithen, survived by his wife of 29 years jail, and he had three daughters, Jennifer and Ruth and Rachel. His mom survived him, Irma Maithen, 95 years old. Gary has been a resident of Garden Grove for the past 25 years. Gary began his law enforcement career with the city of Seal Beach in 1967. After 33 years working various assignments in the city of Seal Beach, Gary retired as a captain in 2000. Two days after his retirement, Gary was hired as the head administrator, consultant at the Garden Grove Police Department City Jail in 2000. Gary was in charge of the entire jail system for the past 13 years until he finally retired in 2013. Gary began joining his life of retirement for 46 years, serving the two communities of Garden Grove and Seal Beach until his untimely death last week. Gary will be solemnly missed, sorely missed by everyone. That's, how old, how old was he?
I don't know.
Don't know, yeah. Well, it's a shame. It's, he just actually went into his retirement, and pretty soon he gone. I don't want to retire either. I just, can't see it. Okay. We're getting ready to go into the holidays. We will not be back until January the 14th at 5:30 PM. I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas. I hope they have a financially well New Years. I hope it's good for them. I think that it's going to be a fantastic year for the city of Garden Grove. We've got a number of things humming and cooking, and some of them will be achieved this coming year, and I'm going to be glad to see it happen. It's, we've got through, I do believe we're through the political, I mean, the economic mess that we've been in the last five years. I think it's through. I think we're going to be well, and I just hope everybody has a great holiday, and I say all this. Thank you very much.